Cause I don't know what your signs like they say. Two miles or something.
Oh, is it?
It's from the beginning, from the beginning.
So it's from there.
Hello.
Cause I'm always like. It's better.
Yeah.
I got a zero mile.
Yeah, okay.
Remember.
Yeah, very good.
No.
Thank you.
It's like you're a girl.
How are you?
Everybody needs me.
I don't care.
I'll thank you.
Anybody.
I, I, I'm feeling it.
Thank you. You're just jelly.
I don't have much left here, but.
Hey.
You're all highlight.
I still have some brown.
A lot. Cheap move? Like a hundred?
Was that, I was trying to weigh.
At least.
Like really not in the chair.
Oh, no. Should be on.
Yeah, that's what.
Actually, three four.
What's that?
I'm thinking more much closer to here at four hundred P M.
Okay.
But I don't think, should be on it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know. Yeah, it should be on.
Do I, did you get an email from me a few days ago? Okay. I was, I am busy. Okay.
This is as of.
Thank you for including me. This is an article on how bad a creek got for people. I think you guys didn't get that.
Oh, you got some of those results.
So kind of, yeah, take it in yours. Like I said, nothing has to be seen, you guys.
You know, just talking to people that have went through the process.
They might have some ideas.
Yes.
Oh, it's on. I will go home and check my emails. Thanks, Jenny.
So you said, not sure this is as of?
It's that much today.
Okay, now we have them today as well.
Yeah, so like I under.
Nor that one? Okay.
I should, I have stuff for you. This is for all the cop drops in the water. Yes, just take it and re, restart or take it for the water. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Well, thank you.
I think it's an adept in maybe the local stuff in those fields before.
Some things have changed.
Well, does, like nothing, nothing. Well, that's what I was gonna say, cause the worst six.
It isn't gonna match for you. Cause this is in July. And we're moving. This is our. I have a key which, then all these numbers that you guys are going over aren't gonna go into.
It's all of that.
They might return to that. It'll all change and that will be the final one put next week. Once we collect all these numbers onto it, okay? It's just for your.
So, you know, ours, we had seventy and she got it updated, seventy is all these, you know, so it's.
So it's close, but.
Yeah, it's just, this was what she gave us as of July first?
Yeah.
And this is, would be my August first and all, so this, this is the subject. Yeah.
This is more documentation. But what you guys have, we're gonna, that's what we're gonna update into that big, it's all spreadsheet.
Yeah, a new one.
But just in case, there was some numbers I'm running with this.
When you said everything essentially. This is all possible, this is all the.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
It is six o'clock, so go ahead and call me, meeting took order, roll call please.
Okay, Paige. Paige.
She said here.
You need to put a recording, hope here, thank you.
Thank you.
Grant?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gaston?
Here.
She doesn't even have to record her up.
What else over there?
Oh, okay.
The.
Well, I asked him. Yeah, that's, that's all, completely.
Well, yes and no.
They're waiting, yeah, this stuff.
Well, no, I get that.
Um, go ahead and take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please join me for pledge, please. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall on the library. It's also available on handle four, the contact from City Hall, and can be found as well provided in the agenda. As a part of discuss the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget for water and sewer, please. Then, uh, I believe after they're done, we're gonna do a quick follow up department. Just make sure that they haven't anything that's not needing to be updated, so. Dennis, number four, please.
Sure. Sure, where do you want to start or?
Number, you wanna start?
Okay.
You wanna do water or sewer?
I, I think we can start with water.
Okay.
So, in my mind. So let me just get through this line by line and have questions, answers, or. I guess, to me, one thing I'd like to note out is bulk water receipts. Current budget was a thousand, we've expended each day, uh, three thousand, and that was over a three year period that we made.
You'll need to speak up just a little.
Sorry, um, okay, so on bulk water receipts. We had a current budget of a thousand dollars, meaning we would make a thousand dollars in revenue on that. And currently, we made three thousand dollars in revenue on that. And that was from October first to December twenty fourth, so when you guys shut us down from, selling bulk water, we made almost three thousand dollars in three months and, so it might be worth, we're looking at reselling bulk water. Um, we had three guys, sorry, two guys.
Well, I got a question, why are we selling bulk water? The city council runs the, the, the entire city, including the water department. Okay, so the city council decided, we will no longer sell bulk water, so why are we sell, we're selling bulk water?
Well, we aren't, as, as.
We, we turned away three people today for three thousand gallons of water that we could have sold.
Well, right, and we're not going to, we're not going to get fined.
But we didn't. Because, because. So we, we weren't gonna get fined before if we followed the guidelines.
If we physically there watching.
Well, the city council decided.
Oh, that's fine, that is, I understand.
That's it.
We're just trying to.
Pointing out the, the point that we made, made money there and could have made more money there if we were allowed to sell bulk water.
Did we like turn it off? When did we turn off?
The end of December.
Yeah.
Of, of just twenty four?
Yeah, twenty four.
So that money would have been made like just, uh, from, uh, October first to December?
So that would have been left over from the highway department, the highway project then, right?
Well, I think some of it, but some of it was, um, ranchers wanting some bulk.
Ranchers, especially during the winter when their hydrants freeze. That's when we get a lot of them wanting to come up and, and grab water. Um, I know a big, a big problem with the water was that it was after hours and it was a service call. Um, we also aren't really competitive with the surrounding area for our water, our water is incredibly cheap. We could bump our, our, our fees to about fifty dollars per thousand gallons. And we could have made a hundred and fifty dollars today while we were just in the shop working. It would have taken us twenty minutes to open the hydrant and, and as long as we're standing there ensuring.
We're not gonna pay this. And, and the other question I have is, you're the department head, right?
Correct.
So, why are your subordinates here at a budget workshop? You should have all the information you need. Why do I have to pay two of you to be here for a budget workshop?
Because I think both of us need to know what's going on with the funds.
I think you're the department head and, and as that person, you should be able to tell your subordinates the relevant information that they need.
Possibly, but they have certain information I might need too.
So you're not prepared for the meeting then?
If, if you wanna call it that, that's, that's fine. This is my first budget workshop that I've ever actually gone to.
Well, we guys sat through all the other ones that, that we've had, so you should be prepared for this.
Okay.
So, I guess my question is, why are we rehashing in a budget workshop a decision that the city council made months and months?
I'm just showing that we could have made additional revenue there. That's the one I was trying to bring up there. I'm just saying that, that, that is an avenue, avenue to explore, that we've had multiple people come and ask for bulk, bulk water and we've turned them away.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on for this, for the taking, we've got a lot to cover and. Would like to make good time, so. Just, just. Let's go ahead and proceed to wherever you wanna, wherever you wanna start, cause we'll need to go over each and every one of these. Um, most of the individuals that have come in have come in with pre numbers, so if you have pre numbers, we can start plugging in or whatever you wanna consider.
Okay, well, um, we have multiple quotes that we would like to bring up to add on to, I would call it. This one initially would be. Either internal plant maintenance or. Capital improvements maybe?
It's sixty two oh four.
Uh, we want to skate a system, an eighty thousand dollars skate system to upgrade the current skate system we have.
So that's your electronic monitoring?
Yes.
So yeah, we would call it capital outlay fifty eight hundred for.
Okay, you just said more than sixty eight hundred a month ago.
Sorry, the, the thirty, thirty one dash fifty eight hundred.
Okay, I was gonna say, it's not the number you gave.
Yes, no, no, yes, no, I'm.
That's drastically different.
The, the account number.
Thank you.
That, that we either wanna put it up under, whether it's, whether we call it capital outlay.
It, it's not gonna be a capital outlay, cause capital outlay affects property value, so it's. It would probably be the internal plant maintenance because you guys don't have, or it would be your current systems because it is a part of your systems.
Yeah, I mean, we call it internal plant. Then we'll call it probably internal plant. So.
And say, say, just say it one more time what it's called.
Uh, skate a system.
Is it what we, is it just an updated version of what we have right now?
Ours is so old and obsolete, it, we can't find somebody to even come in and work on it.
Sure.
Cause I got a guy that comes from Broken Bo, no, Elm Creek comes up and has tried to work on it with the.
No, I, I know, I know the state of our system, I know it's, it's not in a good shape, but is the new system that you want us to consider, is it the same brand, is this update, inversion level?
No, it's, it's all new, complete.
A new, okay. And then what company would that be?
Atlas Automation.
It included entire overhaul of the entire system from, the alarm system notifying us when there's an issue, the interface, meaning we wouldn't need a computer. Um, and it includes the, the plant, the gallery, the south well. Everything being able to talk to each other and, and work properly together. The, uh, the, the tank sensors, the level sensor is all of it. We would be able to access this information.
And what's the cost again?
Eighty thousand.
Even?
Yes.
And that's installed?
Yes. Yes.
That includes installation, it includes schematics for the electrical work that would be done. It includes training and, um, everything that would be involved in the implementation and, uh, continued maintenance. And I do believe you said it would include two to four visits a year for them to come out and, uh, also help us monitor the system and, and work through it as well as.
What are you charged for the ongoing? Is it like a yearly charge?
Uh, we, we have not gotten a, a yearly contract, I do believe that there was something in the, uh, in the original quote about it. Um, but for now, it would just be a quote to actually get the system up and running and, then after the first year, we would negotiate with that.
But she's asking if there's a monthly, a monthly fee to be a part of their system, like kind of like a.
The, the initial, the, the initial year, we don't.
There's nothing in the first year.
There's nothing in the first year.
It'd be after that.
It would probably be after the first year.
Not, I understand, I understand, okay.
Is there, um, companies that, that do kind of the same thing, is there very many?
Not many in the area enough.
There's not many in the area, this, this company is being used by everyone else in the area.
Is there any?
Uh, Shadron is working with these guys to upgrade their system as well, so they, they, they will be in the area.
I just didn't know if there was a competitor that might give us a little better pricing or anything.
Not really, not in the area. We go to Trains and they have a lot of these, you know, guys that would do this kind of stuff and he's the closest one in there now.
Okay, gotcha.
I guess it's a ways from them.
All right.
You said you had another one too?
Um, yeah, so, then we also have, uh, the gallery, one of the two gallery pumps, the rehab quote for that from Sergeant. And it's a little over eleven K.
So that would need to be as far as system repairs, correct?
Yes, that, that would be included.
Yeah, I would call that one.
And you said that's a part of the gallery, a part of the.
It's the secondary pump in the gallery.
Yeah.
The primary pump that we're using now was rehabbed about.
I think four or five years ago.
Okay, Sergeant, just mark your hand up there.
I have a sergeant, yes, Sergeant Relling.
I'm sorry, how much was it, sixty?
Uh, eleven K, a little over eleven K, it's eleven point one.
Thank you. Okay, you guys are done, just kidding.
Expect all of it, but.
That's it, it's done.
Um. I don't have an exact quote, but we'd like to also get a second B F D in the gallery. So that we can have a B F D on both pumps in the gallery, so we'd be able to run them, um, more with automation as well. Right now, we're running one automated and the other one is basically just a straight backup if we need to kick it on or off and that's.
Okay, can we use an abbreviation, so I'll make sure to spell out what that B F D stands for.
Variable frequency drive.
Okay.
We've been working with Jared on that, uh, trying to get a quote. Uh, there's probably a.
And it's tied to what?
Yeah, one of the gallery pumps.
Okay. Is it something that is more of a nec- uh, necessity or is it, uh, a request for just a sooner?
My guess is, is like you get the Atlas system.
System.
In order for it to be able to top them down there, it'll probably need.
Be, be required.
It, it would also.
Okay, what is one of those run?
Oh.
I wanna say five to ten, okay.
Ten to thousand, okay, and that would be systems repairs. So that's gonna bring your thirty one dash sixty two oh three to probably sixteen thousand on the minimum side.
Because since, I mean, that's just the B F D of the pumps. Yeah, not installed, uh, so, yeah.
So probably twenty. So twenty for that.
Cause that was.
So that is an increase because last year it was fifteen, ten.
Um, and then we get a quote from trunk line air relief valves. We're looking at about twelve K there.
Say that one more time?
Uh, trunk line air relief valves, the line from the gallery to the water plant.
Water line, okay.
Yeah, there's multiple air relief valves on there. They're not functioning.
Okay.
If they don't function, then when, um, you kick a pump on, it's water hammering down the whole line and we can blow the line apart, so we have.
And what are, what are we looking at for the cost of that?
About twelve K.
We're not entirely sure, we went out and selected.
Do we know how many valves?
Five, and then we have two in the plant.
We've got about three of them or clearly enough, but they're, they're not installed.
The body in place as well.
So seven times twelve thousand?
No, the, the ones in the planter are a little bit cheaper, um.
You said twelve for the five?
Yeah.
About three inside, you said?
Two, two in the plant, five, five on the trunk line and two on the plant, so.
Two.
And the five or twelve thousand?
Just say the total.
What's that?
The five or twelve?
Five or twelve thousand in addition to two or.
Two in the plant and then.
I'm gonna say four, but they're a little under.
Let's do four just to be on the same side.
That's total nine each, right?
Correct.
I think that's what you're gonna do.
So I mean, yeah.
We're also.
And else is something that needs to be a priority also, correct?
We're, we're looking into a stainless steel body that are made of steel.
Yeah.
For something that's, uh, gonna last a little bit longer.
A little longer.
Yeah, I would bet the ones that.
So that would be a part of the systems.
Yeah, I would bet the ones that.
You're looking at thirty six instead of twenty.
Yeah, I'm gonna bet the ones that are out there, but in there since the beginning of.
Technically, right.
That might fund, so we're definitely.
Okay, a- anything else that you guys found out?
Um, I think that's, uh, four. System repair.
There's system repairs to count.
Thirty one dash sixty two oh three?
I think so.
No, cause it's your service and this is.
Yeah, so it's not system repair, this is system services, the G E S mapping is, um.
That's what you buy a software?
Well, possibly software.
There is more software.
For the mapping perhaps.
Yeah, and that, that, that list, if you want your software, that would probably be appropriate for it to be there instead of under.
Yeah, actually, that probably would be better.
Okay.
Though I, I think there's gonna be some hardware and firmware and.
There'll be a lot of hardware and hardware, but I know they'll also come with, uh, Venus panels and.
That's probably a real UK, don't it?
Yeah, yeah, yes. Um, we got a quote from Subsurface Solutions for GPS mapping. That will get us up to date on our mapping system. I think everything we have is ninety four or older.
How much is that?
Thirteen K.
Okay, thirteen K, we'd be able to map everything within sixteen inches, we'd know the depth of everything, we would have digital map. Uh, we are looking at a three hundred and sixty dollars per year.
Okay, when you say that everything, you'll have to be more specific.
Uh, all, all our water and sewer lines, we would be able to.
We just have to remember that not everybody's been here long enough to understand what you mean by everything, so I wanna use words that, well, and then two, so that the public understands exactly what you're talking about, so.
Yes. Yeah, okay. Yeah.
GPS mapping on all of our.
Meter pits, curb stops, water lines.
It would, it would allow us to locate all of our valves and fire hydrants as well as we continue to move forward and work on valve exercising.
Does anyone in our area have, what's any of this?
This is Subsurface Solutions, I believe Shadron is working with them currently. To, uh, start, start mapping their area, they have maps, rich quarter.
They're also a class one city, anybody our size that has anything comparable?
I don't know for sure on that.
Uh, we did also reach out to them to see if we could get a quote to have them come out as their company and possibly map for us. Um, and, and see if that's an option as well.
Okay, and you said the cost of this, what you have today is.
Uh, thirteen K.
And then was there an ongoing cost?
Yeah, three hundred, six dollars per year.
I think. A year, so?
And they would maintain all our maps, now those maps would also transfer over to eight one one. So whenever anyone put in a diggers, we would be able to give them and report them a map of.
So that would probably would be software.
As, as we move forward, if people were to change their service lines, we could map those out as well as on your side.
Okay, that is, I would say that is something that would certainly be something everyone would enjoy, but it's not a requirement at this time, you guys have notification, it's a requirement, correct?
Yeah, it's not a requirement.
Terry's.
Nice to have.
Where does the, um, eight one one please, what account, what do you able to pull that, my, uh?
Don't know off the top of my head, it's under. I do, the utility services. Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, it's probably under utilities here.
I mean, it would make sense that it comes out of water syrup, cause that's what we love.
It would help, yeah, it would split between the two of them. They just don't have their own line item.
Yeah.
How do you tell it's a?
I think it's, okay, I have any utility, I'd have to look on the system, but my guess is that, that it's go, and it's being split between. One or two are probably.
Okay, so, cause we'll, we might have to locate both, so yeah.
Yeah.
I think it would be split evenly between those two.
Yeah. Did you have additional items besides those remaining?
Um, the ongoing hot service contract and the coming service contracts.
Those are both contracts we already have, correct?
Yeah, yeah, they're just currently on my.
And what are those contracts and services, that's twenty nine items, thirty one fifty six, right?
Um, we have.
Who's that from the leases or?
What's that, I don't think so.
Well, this is.
Cause right now we have sitting at this last current budget of sixty three five forty five.
Right now, but this is, this is just the, and tank inspection. Um, that's how much that contract is per year, so the, uh, generator.
Would be in addition to.
Water, water has two generators, so.
That would be another.
Two thirds of that contract.
Twenty one hundred.
Go under.
Yeah, which is two thousand and then those two other ones about.
Contracts are all, and then the hot contracts would all be water, it's about four point two.
So that needs to be probably sixty five for next year, so I don't understand.
Well, I think, I, no, I think that's what it is, I, just for the tanks.
Yeah, sixty five for the water tanks.
I think, I think we might better be bumping that up, at least a couple thousand.
I think that's right.
Well, cause last year we had a sixty five four fifty one and they spent sixty three, and so we had, this year we had it at sixty three five forty five, so.
I think we gotta.
But if we want to back up to sixty five, would be okay, or do we need to be more than that is what I'm asking, I guess.
I, I think we just had.
Seven, sixty eight.
Six K to it basically.
Sixty seven, sixty eight, okay, so.
So yeah, we did also renegotiate our contracts with the tank.
Right.
Yeah, so it's been coming down the last couple of years a little bit.
Okay, so we need to consider that sixty eight.
Uh, we do have one more item for internal plant maintenance. We're looking at a, a thousand dollars to re, to, to upgrade our alum tank, uh.
You said alum?
Alum.
Alum.
Yeah, A L U M. It's that banking stuff, you, you don't.
It's a kinda, it's an additive we add to the water to help particular matter clump together so we can filter it out easier.
Sure.
The tank we have is round and unfortunately there's a, a hole drilled in the bottom of it on a round surface, so it doesn't make a. Good, good tight seal, we've actually been losing our alum solution down the foreground.
So you have to do like a cube?
Whether it be for a square, a, a square container, it's about eight hundred bucks.
Yeah, square.
Um, it would be on a pallet, we'd be able to move it and, uh.
So where do you, you said it's inside the plant?
Yeah, the internal plant, right, it has the sixty two oh four.
Okay, so then that would be pretty much the only thing you have in there, so if we put a thousand dollars on that. So that's we move the other to sixty two oh nine.
We, uh, it's not controlling system, but.
Well, the gallery pump's still in there, in the internal plant maintenance, right, the gallery pump? Or did I get that?
No, that one should be.
That one we had under repairs on the system.
Oh, on your system, oh, okay.
This is sixty two oh three, sixty two oh three, we had a thirty six thousand.
Okay, got it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're at. That last thing, you called it a fox?
Uh, uh, cube.
A cube, I'm sorry.
Tank, it's just a tank, it's a, it's a portable water tank.
Okay, cube tank.
For chemical tank.
Oh, okay, oh.
It's just, it's a, it's a portable water, we, we looked into getting some refurbished ones, but a lot of them have chemicals in them and they're not used for portable water systems.
Oh, okay.
So because it's for the drinking water, we have to, uh.
Makes sense, yeah. That makes sense, okay.
We should really try. From what we're spending or not spending as a gallery, I think we.
We might be able to do that without putting it in a budget item.
Right.
We might be able to do that without putting it in the budget item, uh, as far as being the last question then, um.
Yeah.
Would we be able to report or run reports on how much is being spent with just the south wells or just the water gallery or?
So right in there.
It's a, it's a.
But a lot of that's for bottages, so it shouldn't be horrible to split out any of it, but it would it would take manpower as opposed to just being with the account.
And we're talking the infiltration guy, right?
Yes.
Cause every man. Well, the south wells are not a part of it, they're, yeah, which is, they're separate, they're separate.
Infiltration.
Oh, okay, so. I thought we had a separate line item for infiltration system. Yeah, but it's just for the ready, or it's just the uh. Infiltration guy, it's only red.
Yeah.
Part of the.
Yeah.
Runway, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's tied to a specific project and that's why it has its own line system.
So if we need something like that, we could find a a contract and and agree, we're needing to find the stuff from before that's going to be good or on that one.
Yeah.
But I mean, if we if we need to break down south wells and infot- infiltration system, I can look for some accounting others and maybe we could do that. And then all those bills go to that, and then you could report on that easier. Well, there's there's separate utility bills for the south well, right, cause that's on um, um. It's not N G P D, it's uh.
N R D.
R O R.
You know.
N R D? Yeah.
N R D?
No, not N R D, it's anyways, it's science points, I mean, uh, so, but.
That's.
I can't be moved. I think it's it it's more important that that we be able to track what we've spent in years past on each facility. So that we can hopefully be uh help budget better, you see what I'm saying? So I don't know how to break that out, how to do this, take that out.
Would you make, would you make a note to ask Jane and see if there's something that she already had in place that kind of did that without doing this, or if it would be better to do it within the budget and split it out?
Yeah.
Okay, you would make a note to ask her if it, cause she might have something already kind of that she has done in the past, and if it does, then it would match up to be consistent. We could have all of history of records to refer to as opposed to trying to generate something from down forward.
Northwest where, that's what it is, yeah.
So I wonder what that bill was for, I didn't know that one was.
The the don't, we don't really run the south wells up a lot, so we do use minimal power out there, we run uh once a month in the summer.
Yeah, it's a small hill. Yeah.
Uh, we did have sergeant drilling come out and do some silk tests and some pressure checks on the pumps out there, everything is looking fine, so we should be good for the next year.
So as far as overall, any of our income on account numbers, anything that starts with a four thousand is what this is gonna be?
Yeah.
We don't, we don't expect any of this to change drastically in any means.
Uh, other than losing the ARPA funds, is that correct?
Yeah. Um, those are just for the, that's, that's a project, yeah, so that, that would be tied to, yeah.
I mean, not the one I'm dealing with, yeah. I mean. That's the one I'm dealing with.
But other than that, everything should be fairly consistent to what it's been, it, would that be accurate from what you're on?
Yeah. Sorry, from what I've seen, the one I was printing out, it's looking like it's very much accurate, yeah.
Sure, 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 so let's go ahead and start with, I just, I wanna rush through these, what we need to go through these kind of line by line, make sure we don't miss anything.
Mm-hmm.
As far as wages, that would be three percent to consider.
Do we wanna split the on-call actually out on the next line, and cause you know, right now it says nothing for on-call, do we wanna actually note that weekends are technically on-call and that kind of stuff, do we wanna split those out or do we need to know what it is?
I couldn't tell you when that was originally created, um, and what the intention behind that was, where we don't have three years worth of any, any history on it, on the line item.
Yeah.
So, um.
I mean, I just took basically our wages times fixed two weeks a year, times the eight hours we put on the weekend and twelve that, you know, so we can throw a rough number in there.
Oh, okay.
If you wanna see what on-call wages are versus, you know, i- if that's worth tracking.
Right. Um, thoughts, council?
I like that, don't you?
Diane?
Yeah.
You like that idea too?
Yeah.
And and I guess I might show not just, you know, weekends and holidays, but it might show all the emergencies, you know, and and.
Emergencies, yeah. Cause we kind of took those last years.
I'm not sure, I mean, we don't have a lot of those that are after hour emergencies, but it would, you know.
No, we should know that, I think, but.
It would, it might, might, we were tracking and seeing what that cost is.
Hmm, would you, uh, you probably need to probably make a note, ask Jane how we can best.
Well, we track out uh overtime, right, those hours all get tracked out.
Sure, right, right. But how realistic it, yeah, it is to actually make that happen, so if you wanna check that.
But we don't mark the four hours on the weekends as on-call, they're just probably the hours in there, so so they're not really.
Right, right, so it would, it would eventually actually be, you know, if we have a meeting now, if we did that.
Okay, yeah, cause we don't actually break those out. Because typically, it's probably your forty hours.
Right.
Yeah, so we try to work around it, yes.
Maybe if you have more hours in your trading, in essence, those extra hours not the, so we don't like hold them specially, right, right, so we would have to start.
Right.
Yeah.
Would you uh ask Jane kind of what her opinion was on that also, and maybe that's something we can come back to, that's really not gonna change the overall number, it'll just change how we.
We just move it from this to the this line and this line, and go, this is what we are typically doing.
But it's considering. Sure. Sure, for payroll taxes, they're probably not gonna change much, retirement's not gonna change much in either.
But I like knowing the emergency thing, just so we can put that in the budget, there's always the emergencies, so we can look at, oh, this year we did such a.
We can keep track of it, it's increased by an hour, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Well, and that's just, I just wanna make sure that's not too expensive, but we don't want to save money here instead of have to spend an extra.
Yeah. Twelve hours. Well, emergency might be easier to do than the four hours that you're giving for overtime now, right? Is that correct?
So it's not overtime, it's just on.
Well, it's.
On call.
Yeah, we 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 try to work in our forties.
It's part of their.
But the emergency hours are checked differently?
That would be like overtime hours.
We we would also try to work those in if we could, but we 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 do our best to try and stay within forty hours sometimes.
Yeah, they do.
Um, my, I have a quick question on the way, cause I know that's him and me, does that also include the time that Jody goes for us, I know she does a lot.
Yes.
Sewer, well, does she code some of that?
So whatever percentage of that.
Well, I wasn't sure if she was, I wasn't sure if she was coding her stuff towards us or not.
Yeah, I am.
It it is, yeah, and that is.
Cause I think she should be.
Yeah.
She was.
Well, and it helps the city because you guys have one of the more, you know, the budgets. So it helps us be able to pay things, especially everybody ready to serve, ready to serve, we can only use in certain ways, and so where she's helps in that way, it's a way we can help cover and free up funds, funds that are not limited for the rest of the city, so, yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, and she had.
But they they got a figure to a percentage of what she's landing.
Yeah, we split it.
That.
If she codes her time.
But for, that number doesn't really show it for this whole year because they, she wasn't being taken out of there, I only started doing that, it used to be, and then it stopped.
So that's not out of hours, it's a percentage. Yeah.
Right.
It was, so I were doing it back, so that number will change from those spreadsheets, and I I could probably have raised it then.
So we're looking at more than bond wages on, so current budget, we've got seventy point four.
It's gonna, and I've got that number um in the office, we took, I took all of that, plus I took a three percent increase, so I've got those.
Okay, so you have that note that we can plug in, okay, so I will put start, Terry.
And I actually plugged it in on the the spreadsheet, but I handed out as additional, it's in yellow. And so those hours, so you'll see the wages for water, seventy eight, sewers, sixty four.
Okay, so we can put that on seventy eight one twenty eight.
And that includes.
And that would include Jimmy.
Yeah.
So it's seventy eight one twenty eight oh seven.
It also includes like when.
Right.
When Tim has helped out.
Yeah, and when he digs up for us, yeah, I don't know if he codes too much to us, but yeah.
Yeah, so. But I have that all broken down, I can give that to you guys.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So then I'll go ahead and move on, payroll taxes, that's all calculated, and actually you have it here, fifty three hundred needs to be seventy one fifty one fifty.
Yeah. I'm gonna click on that one, yeah.
Retirement at fifty four hundred, it's thirty two thousand, fifty three dollars, seventy seven cents.
Seventy seven. Yeah.
And employee benefits is twenty four thousand, eight one five and forty nine cents. So those would be accurate numbers for that, can you, Terry? Unemployment is not, I have to validate this.
That's under one of the, uh, we don't have, that's unemployment when people claim unemployment, that's where we really go, and.
It is.
Yeah.
Right. Um, contractual services, we kind of went over that one, um, dues and fees, do you guys expect that to change by any means?
Mm-hmm.
It just went over this last year, uh, and two years pretty much even was.
Uh, for dues and fees, that's gonna be our licensing.
They're.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, there are, there are three of those patents.
No, I saw that. I don't know, some A W A W A and stuff like that, we're we're part of that.
Yeah, that Paul originally canceled, and then.
But. Believe in this whole.
Right.
Wouldn't it be the fact?
Um, it it pulls about twenty percent off of that.
They're all our staff.
As as members, if we needed.
So last year we spent a little over three thousand, and this year to date we're at twenty two thousand, two thousand eighty eight dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Have we, it's, have we went through all those this year so far, or have we?
Yeah, I got it up to date. When is that, uh?
It's for December, it would be.
No, yeah, uh, our license renewal is in December and this, the next one would be, she she doesn't know if we got anything else in this fiscal year, and I don't think so because.
The whole thing is this year.
In December this year, December two.
So this fiscal year is our.
The, um, I think so, because the training in Kerry is like October third or fourth, right?
So that would be a next year's all.
It's. So that's our next year's.
So you should have, realistically, you've been through everything this year on this fiscal year, so that's a realistic number.
So I think. Yes, I'm I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that's.
So we shouldn't need to change that by now.
I don't think so.
Okay, so let's roll that number over again.
Which one do we use?
I I would just go off of the spend that to, the spend that to date.
Fifty seven hundred.
Of which, two thousand eighty.
No, we're on.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, yeah, yeah, two thousand eighty eight, eighty eight dollars and four cents is what they can put there, yeah.
No, I'm not. Yeah.
Fuel, that's jumped quite substantially.
And I don't know if that's.
I know you guys have mentioned that you were concerned about that before, did you?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna try to figure out if that was propane, um, and bulk diesel and, um, our our truck fuel, you know.
You're looking at it down there.
Mm-hmm.
That's up on it. Last year you had a five thousand, this year you're at ninety one hundred.
Bulk diesel. Yeah.
We're spending about a hundred dollars a month in truck fuel. Um.
And I don't know, maybe one of those kids could caught, um, you know, fuel at the beginning of the year for like bulk diesel for the generators, you know, right at the beginning of the year, in the fiscal year, um.
That's maybe.
We we won't, we won't fill those twice this year.
The bulk diesel.
All the, all the diesel.
Yeah, I think so, but then also the propane on the, uh.
The propane, we 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 have been trying to fill, max fill our propane in the summer, but the prices are way, 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 way down, um, we did have to fill a couple of times last winter, you know, it was uh.
Long.
Would you make a note to just look into the differences potentially between last year and this year and how, that way, the more knowledgeable we can understand the, you know, just.
The difference on those.
Why that's a four thousand dollar difference, and that will help us be able to prepare for this next.
Well, how good should we be on that, I mean, if Tim goes and digs the hole, if the machines full of fuel, when he leaves the shop, goes and does the work.
But you give it.
We go fuel less, put water on that ticket, I mean, that's how it should be broken out.
Yeah, I'll get it's banned like that.
Yeah.
Well, and something else to consider too, that might just be in in looking at last year and then your before, that might be just a difference in in clerk.
Yeah, where where money got put in buckets.
Terry, because.
Yeah, cause I hold up this stuff.
Cause we've, we've, right, we've we've run into a lot of different areas where it's just a difference in clerk and how they.
How they track it, yeah.
How 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 they, where they decided to process it, so, y- your number might not be that far off, but as long as you're familiar with what, how those needs are met and that it's where it needs to be. So would you be comfortable shooting for ninety thousand next year, or do you think it needs to be ninety five, I mean, cause we're not quite done yet, and that's what you have to.
Yeah.
Can can we do a little more research and come back to you at the final, I mean, if we can get a bigger breakdown on kind of how this.
If you'd like.
That.
I think that's our, we can, because.
Okay, so at this time, we'll just do, uh, we'll do ninety five hundred at this time, and then you can come back and see if you wanna adjust that.
Yeah, cause it might have been one of those things where we usually got bulk fuel, you know, for our plants in September, and then last year we got it in COVID's day, and just hit the whole fiscal year.
Right. Sure, sure, and it might have just been that, not, not, yeah.
I mean, we are currently working contracts for new fuel providers, or no?
No, we've got a bid out there that we have to do over here.
We have.
It's a, it's an annual, uh, it's an annual, so we do it at the same time every year, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was, I was.
It won't change.
And those are, they don't change often, um, as far as insurance, um. It says that last year zeros expended and this year it's been zero expended, did we, we must not have insurance broke down to be what it needs to be towards water.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, Terry, if you'd make a note on that one, we need to definitely come back to that, because that, we need to make sure that insurance that is. Towards those facilities, towards anything that we can use from from this budget, cause that will help our overall general fund too.
Yeah. Okay.
So if you'd make a note of of looking into that and that.
I will.
Is there, we we can kind of get like a, like print on one of our policies to see if we, if we could ever actually use anything, I know we get a lot of big damage on building and things like that.
So, it is on that sheet.
Oh, it is on that sheet, yeah, you have it on your breakdown sheet, that's forty five fifty eight.
Yeah. The sheet is slightly more than.
One fifty nine hundred.
Yeah. That's probably pretty accurate then. So we'll just need to make sure that.
Thirty two fifty nine hundred, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah. Nine hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
So our total number is fifty five thousand.
Zeroes have been expended there too.
Yeah, we.
Oh, you're looking at myself, yeah, so, okay, so she had yours on herself and you find this one, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Are you even attending the same meeting?
She's, she's put all this on machine, she's, she's empty.
I've got a really fun meeting. My meetings were.
All right, so we can actually plug in that forty five thousand. To the insurance, cause that shouldn't be terribly different. And professional fees, that's.
The last contractor on the retainer, is that correct?
Um, no, that will be.
No, it's the engineers.
That's what I think to that contract, an engineer contractor.
Um.
Um.
I would hope that we don't have anything like we've had the last year. But that doesn't mean that will be the case, um.
I don't foresee, but, yeah.
Think ten positive, shut your mouth.
She's in my meeting. Her meeting's more fun.
I don't guess.
Yeah, this year to date, we've already expended sixty three.
You had three, huh? That's it.
And we only budgeted for seven ago.
Yeah, that's salary, you're right.
We're not, we're not looking too long.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, we're not, I'm seeing many projects, I mean, no.
Um. No, not at this time, you guys have talked about already working on grant projects, funding, like, would it be those time too?
Yeah.
We're 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 looking, we're 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 still looking to just fix what we have and bring it up to the future.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
But again, depending on the cost of that and the size of that, it would easily.
Yeah.
Fall fall in that category, so it's something that needs to be considered, um, it's probably not a bad standard just to keep seven in there, just because that seems to be what we've had for a baseline. Um, just to make sure that if we do, we have at least something.
That's all.
Pretty much anything that's wrong, you're.
Yeah.
You're gonna have that, yeah, yeah, so let's keep a baseline of seven K down please, and six thousand.
Yeah.
Um, tank fee, that's fairly minimum, that can carry over, uh, sixty fifty has no items, publications and advertising, um, I think that is uh mainly for advertising for bids and open positions.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be fairly consistent too.
I know some, was mailers work, mailers have to hear.
We we do have.
We also had that that night.
We do have some light coming up, if you're, if we were trying to get identifications, because we have been tasked to send out letters to everyone.
Yeah, the black armor.
Survey.
Yeah, some of that stuff.
Again, who did not respond, so it's not a.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Who's been responding, that's that's coming in November, uh, we are doing that.
Okay, so if we did the majority of that last year and we're at sixty, six thousand or eight, sixty, six hundred.
Six hundred.
Six hundred thirty.
Six, six hundred.
I'm sorry. Reading numbers, I'm sorry, six hundred thirty six dollars and fifty six cents, uh. I mean, really, realistically, we should be able to stay at six hundred.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Because that, the mailers, this next year all began as big, as big, and I I think we can make that work, that doesn't sound too unraised or too crazy, um, maintenance.
Six hundred, yeah.
Um, we don't have a lot figured in, we did budget for three thousand, so either you guys haven't done any maintenance or it just hasn't been figured into to that category.
Well, yeah.
The the.
Well, I'm not sure what that category is.
It's kind of like a general maintenance category where we, we've been trying to keep everything pretty specific, um.
Yeah, that's what I've.
Yeah. And e- and exactly, it might just not fall in that category, cause you have like another categories, do you, would you like to keep anything in that category, you guys, that's like the question I need to ask you.
Yeah. I think we would like to keep, uh, at least two thousand, about three thousand in there, um.
Well, it it's not a matter of keeping funds, but it's a matter of.
Potential, well, yeah, but I'm setting it, you know, at a, at a low, I I think.
Right, 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 cause, cause if you reserve it for that, you're gonna have less to have in the op, open in other areas.
I. I I think we could reduce it, and I, but I don't know that I wanna reduce it.
I think fifteen hundred would be enough for a thousand, just so that you have some, cause it's it's fairly small, I mean, anything that.
Well, that's why I was thinking closer to two thousand, just in case, you know, we do stumble upon something that we have more.
Sure, large batteries or generator or something.
Like generally, and then we need, I mean, we need to repair a block or we.
Well. You know, there's the front door, the garage floor grates or something like that.
But again, you have the following, I think that's where we get into the following, that's, cause we have repairs on buildings, so I think maintenance has.
Yeah.
We'll be a building maintenance.
Well, that's where I think maintenance would be more like oil changes than that, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Well, but I mean, for pumps and motors and that kind of stuff.
But again, you've got your next three line items, sixty two, I one, oh two, then oh three that are all broken down, so I think it's a matter of using those more accurately and leaving maintenance behind, you know, would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, it's maybe sis, uh, yeah, or. Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense, yeah, I think so, I think so.
I think.
Okay, we'll zero out with sixty two. Okay, we'll zero out sixty two hundred. As far as vehicle repairs, we've been fortunate, we haven't had to repair anything, um, but regular veh- vehicle maintenance and oil changes and all that stuff would be another.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I really, you've had yours in more often. I took I took my truck in a couple of times, you probably.
Yeah, yeah, I bet it's under maintenance though, isn't there maintenance vehicles?
I know.
Well, that's a repair is vehicle, oh, is there a vehicle maintenance?
I don't know, I thought there was, I thought I have that in other departments, 'cause it's confusing, uh, maintenance versus repair.
I don't know. I'm not seeing it.
Me neither. Testing maintenance, but I don't know. 'Cause I know, I mean, just a month ago you had your truck in, it was checked.
Yeah.
Yes, and we do we do still have a quote for about a thousand dollars worth that could be done in from a oil pressure sensor and a few other.
Sure. Delicious.
I know. Um, it would be nice to keep that at a a thousand dollars per vehicle repair, I think that's very uh reasonable and we can look at that.
Okay, and there's a good chance that, well, I'm like, that's what we budgeted last year, we just haven't used it, so I I don't think that's unrealistic, so we'll keep that as one thousand.
Yeah.
Um, repairs to the buildings, we've uh to year to date, we're already at a thousand and we haven't finished the lighting, um, and that will add to it substantially. Um.
Yeah, I know that's like heaters.
That's the other thing is is we did do the heater systems.
Yeah, I think that's what kind of building repairs and heaters.
Kind of and 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 there was, there was five thousand dollars right there just for that single heater, um, and then the electric heaters was another thousand dollars, so I'm not sure where that.
So. I'm not probably should have went in repairs as opposed to system repairs if it went, no, it doesn't look like system repairs if it's at seventy three.
Well. Yeah, well. I I think it must have been under internal plant maintenance. Would be my guess is where it went, if I'm not.
Yeah, 'cause that one has ninety three, that I bet I bet that's been a catch all.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what all that. In Trump's office, yeah.
So we just need to add that.
Um, I don't foresee a whole building repairs, whether.
Probably clarify.
Well, I mean, we could we could.
No. Couple of windows on the south wall.
On that, so we can cut that line out and and then just make the internal plant maintenance, maybe as opposed to building repairs.
Well, but I mean, if they wanna know, you know, like for the solid walls, yeah, 'cause it's the external of the building as well, um, you know, I know that one window at the south wall.
The external.
How much of much of that's gone into there? How much of it's been in the same like car?
We do, we do, we're at the south wall, we got some sightings, so hold on, I'll get the dollars.
But like, we didn't have anything in the budget for it, we ninety two thousand, so that's like guaranteed, that's fine.
I think we're putting all that into.
So as far as building repairs, what would be a number that you'd be comfortable with or that you think would be?
I think we should roll another thousand dollars every year.
So just to just leave it at a thousand?
Leave it at a thousand.
Okay, that's realistic. Council, you're agreeing so far? Okay.
Well, somewhere, I could probably better be adding this ninety three.
Would the ninety three be wiped at down to a thousand? 'Cause the eighty thousand that they wanna consider for the skate systems going to software at sixty two and nine.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I I think what you're saying is is what was that ninety three and do we need to account for it this coming year?
So the ninety is sixty two over.
Somewhere.
Right, right.
So we spent a lot of money on that water pump this year and that's already gone.
And I think I think that's the lead in there.
I'm sure that's where it's.
I'm not sure what all that ninety three was.
'Cause like you said, the the you're missing all that stuff that's waiting to be.
Well, I I take that back, I think that ninety three is the gallery project.
We had we had the the heater, we had the electric heaters, um, we did have the pump modification.
Right.
Uh, we've had a lot of service calls between electric and we've had outlets out, we've had.
Got those three pumps put in.
Um. We had.
Oh, but I think that was.
We weren't sure that was what that seventy three was from last year.
It was one seventy three. I think those are the.
I don't know, I don't know how much of that seventy three is a seventy three.
Repair city system, I think that was the pump, I think that's the pump.
Yeah, I think that was.
I think those were those three pumps was this year.
Oh, I'm not sure with that.
Now, as far as the repairs to the gallery, that's gonna be sitting under capital outline for this year. That's why that looks the way it does for expanded year to date.
That's. Oh, okay.
So that's for the gallery project, I said this, 'cause that's anything that's.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, well, that's what I was trying to figure out, like, what what that ninety three is, 'cause I I really.
The value of the system, right. I I think it's a bit of a catch all for repairs for the system.
I think it has to. 'Cause I was trying to figure out what we did to kind of amount to that.
Well, I just. Well, I mean, our our we 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 had to upgrade a lot of our trividity system and we we upgraded the whole.
Right.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
No, we might have had some already in the gallery that accidentally got put in there and under capital like too.
The whole.
We bought, we bought media, didn't you?
We did not buy media.
Not this last year.
We reclaimed media from the clearwall.
But that was last summer, so it would have been under last year's.
Right.
Well, we didn't buy, we bought media the year before that.
We didn't buy any.
Okay.
Well, we better find out, figure out what that what.
Figure out what that's.
What all is in that bucket?
Yeah, I think.
Don't you mean we can easily make a year to date sixty two oh four, yeah, help us break that one out to the city line.
I can.
Yeah, sort of.
Yeah.
And I know that sixty two oh four comes in, we need a lot for.
Right, right, right. So let's let's get a breakdown of that one and come back to that one, and then we probably also need to revisit the sixty two oh two for that same reason.
Right.
Okay, so we'll leave those at this time. External plant maintenance, we have year to date twelve hundred. Um.
Yeah.
Again, that could be a lot of the sixty two oh four that need to be moved and not accurate, so we leave that for now. City line maintenance, would that be what you'd consider coming from the gallery to the water plant and?
Uh, no.
The city line digs that we've done.
City line.
Oh, so it'd be spot.
Yeah, patches. We're buying heater pits or meters or barrels or.
Yeah, yeah, that probably needs to go up, 'cause we've had substantial, every year it keeps increasing, so.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, patches for.
Right, I I don't I don't think that fifteen hundred will be inappropriate.
Fifteen thousand.
Start, yeah, I'm sorry, yes. Listen to what I mean by that, I say fifteen thousand.
Fifteen one.
Because they never budgeted or put anything towards that in the past.
No.
No. Yeah, it's it's.
Well, I don't know if it fell under maintenance, but it would have been way too low for that.
It probably would.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
That could have been part of what you're seeing and it'll be interesting to see what you find, I guess is what we'll do on that. Testing maintenance, that would be.
The backflow preventer, uh, or uh, discalibration to the backflow testing equipment is what that is.
Okay.
Calibration.
Okay, year to date.
I'm basically.
Yearly.
Yearly.
We need to keep thousand dollars in there.
Basically, yeah.
Okay, so a thousand in that please. Okay, other sixty two oh nine software is where we penciled in the atlas at eighty thousand. Sales tax is going to be automatically generated, let's see, it looks like we've given it, why?
I don't know, it's self just.
We don't have that up, it doesn't look accurate at all, 'cause last year we paid sixteen.
Right.
Yeah, I see that.
Would you look into that amongst that whole redesigns tax?
Was there sales tax on the bulk water? I don't know, I bet you it was.
And it should be our utility bills that we send out to our customers for generally exam.
Well, it's on our bills, it's on golf revenue, it's on.
So something's not built right, if we don't have that up higher than it is for extended year to date.
Well, since right here is a to year to date, seventy five hundred.
Yeah, for water.
On the Excel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, I don't know why this report ran the way it it is, 'cause these numbers I pulled up from.
Right, would be where you'd pull from that same report anyway, right?
Super strange.
Super strange.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so we'll we'll keep that at seventy five hundred and I don't know that that would be.
Okay. I'm gonna write one.
Necessarily change. Okay, it's about a catch. Supplies, we have current year budget at twenty thousand. Again, that might be part of what's in that ninety three.
I think that I bet that's what we'd chunk it, that's it, yeah.
I I guess I'm not sure what originally was deemed a supply.
Uh, two parts, you know, that like you said, that's to stay on any of that kind of stuff.
I think it's definitely a lot of our parents purchases, a lot of our uh granger purchases.
Tractoring.
Yeah, I know.
Well, but I have a suppose.
That that number's not right either, it's it's twenty thousand.
No, it can't be, so we need to decide, so.
Yeah, I think like you said.
But there's a difference between, let me put it a different way, I um, there's a difference between buying parts for something that is an item that fixes or replaces or
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
helps a a system retain its value, 'cause it brings it back up to what it needs to be, and something that's a consumable.
Yeah, yeah.
So like, right, 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 so something like favor valves or something that you use on a regular basis that doesn't by buying it, you're not making something toll, but it's something that you need to buy in order to have a certain stock ups and almost like.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Right.
So I would assume that 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 line item probably needs to be considered, supplies needs to be considered or kind of just anything that would be like a consumable item.
Well. Correct. I I think.
I think when we don't know what somebody's going through to the day or not, pretty often, because I mean, we can't tell them what's in it.
No, that's, I think that would be spent in.
Not just for the.
No.
Well, that's kind of budget.
So this is budget numbers, not actuals.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. That's why they're matching right budget numbers here. This is.
Yeah.
So I don't also, I don't think supplies needs to be on twenty thousand, the only way that would be twenty thousand is if you guys need to.
I don't. I don't.
Okay.
That's why I think.
I I think, you know, if we look, I can see when maintenance where we're at twelve K at, I think that would have come out in this, you know, that's what they would have.
If we need to buy. Sure, sure, 'cause it's like, I think maintenance is different, like if you need to replace a bolt, that would be maintaining a system, but whereas supplies, I think is where you're consuming.
Yeah. Correct. Yeah. Yeah, and so I think it's just.
Or whether you like cleaning products.
It was bloods and then a lot of spot type tissues, yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And but I don't know that it would be, would we need to consider our, like the filler in the system?
I think supplies would also, I mean, you could you could argue that it that a a valve could be a consumable.
Chemical some.
Right, and it has.
It could be.
Happen.
Because they.
But it also is maintaining your your your.
Right.
Right, we we buy it for life, but like.
And and you should you should have, you know, so many valves on hand, so that would be supply, I mean.
Could be.
And I'm sure there's stuff you buy that you'd use in lots of places, so it's just.
So what about where where would we normally put, like if we were to replace all the, I don't know where it's not coming in, all the stuff that we keep inside the tank that actually filters water?
Media.
Yeah, media, would would supply, would that, would the media be considered a supply? Like that to me seems more like a supply, because it's something that's
That media.
Mm-hmm. That I would call supply.
like an expendable item, like the the media itself doesn't add value to the system, but it's necessary to work the system, like oil in the truck.
Mm-hmm.
So what would be internal plant maintenance?
Yeah.
Um, to have that for it has been.
Yeah.
Well, that that I guess that's the the question is what the breakdown of our internal plant maintenance is to see if it.
It's interesting to see that in the last three years, they've had twenty thousand dollars in there, what they had, what what they had that connected to.
Well, what did they put towards that?
I mean, we we spent thirty thousand last year in that same category, so it was.
Right. Yeah, well, it makes you wonder what that thirty thousand was kind of.
Yeah, it just, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Would you uh, we'll we'll do a little research, I'm sorry, we're just like circling off your third of these, if you could give us a little more insight on that.
Yeah. Counsel, yeah.
'Cause I don't, depending on how you use that one or the previous ones, it could be zeroed out or it we can still need that.
We we can move it to a different line item, absolutely, to a total allowance, a different line item, absolutely.
Some of them do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, uniform allowance, that's two employees, it's three hundred.
No.
Uh, one employee per each.
But what I go for is.
One and one.
Oh, 'cause it's the other, I'm sorry, thank you for the correction, a hundred and fifty, sure. Uh, fire hall water extension.
People for a bar, super, yeah. I don't know what that's. That's a uh, an old project and they had to leave it on there, I think it's just.
Sure, 'cause if it's ever once used, it's always used, sure. CD expended, that's also gone. Water project twenty twenty, that's no longer for Apple.
Yeah, once used, once you have to.
Um, last year, for the current budget, you had five hundred.
I think we need to retain that, um, some of that's the road to the sewer plant, the road to the water plant, you know, and then also we were um
Okay. Sure, and then also the the gallery.
backfilling holes if if we, you know, roll water mess, we could back it with some gravel, that's a good thing.
Right. Okay. Training and education, uh, we have budgeted a thousand dollars, you guys are almost up to two thousand, same with, I mean, consistently almost two thousand dollars the last three years, is it realistic to keep that at two thousand?
Yeah.
I thi- I think two thousand is.
Yeah, it's probably pretty fair.
Would be would be more realistic.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we should have more people go well, maybe another person to be trained for water sewer, but it's more the continuing ed training as opposed to licensing.
Right. Leasing, which is a little different, so it might be a smaller, but shouldn't be over.
Yeah.
We.
Yeah.
Okay, utilities. That should be not very changing, um, but again, we're kind of substantially lower than what we've been the last two years.
I have been uh keeping on top of keeping the lights off when 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 I first started working, the lights were on and the whole plant is twenty four hours a day, so.
Maintenance. That's.
Uh, we have been.
It does, yeah.
Uh, we we also switched to the propane heaters in the gallery instead of using the two forty electric heat.
Right, and the, yeah. So that could be seen, um.
Uh.
Let's keep it one more year.
You think seventeen thousand or you're thinking twenty four thousand?
Twenty one thousand.
I I think we can hold it and we see see if we're able to.
One more year, let's. Let's see what we got, yeah.
Okay.
'Cause we don't even know for sure if anybody's gonna raise their rate again.
I don't think so.
I'm not very sure, yeah, I know they they did kind of talk about that at their presentation, that's a good idea, that way we have the room there and we're prepared when it does happen or when it happens.
Yeah.
It's.
And we if we are more efficient, we are doing a better rate, therefore spending less money, so let's let's budget for the twenty four, at least one more year, I think.
Right. Just in case. Yeah, that's that's pretty smart, council, agreed? That that works okay. Um, other, we've got s somehow they budgeted last year forty five hundred and uh you guys spent seventeen twenty, whatever else would be.
We're gonna sponsor the Christmas party this year?
If your Christmas party is seventeen twenty, I don't know.
No, 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 with the remaining forty for seventy six, you know.
Seventy six. What do we think? Um, it is. It's not specifically.
I think that's a catch all, I I think I think just that's a catch.
I think that budget item could be rolled up into.
I I would rather zero that out and like to see it where it's appropriate, needs to be appropriately used and and not put anything in a non-describ- a non-descriptive account number, please, so we'll leave that at zero if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah.
Um, gain lots of dispute of assets, that's more of an accounting and auditing option, I'm sure. Capital outline, we don't have any scheduled large projects and the gallery should be wrapped up this year. Um, we shouldn't expect that to bleed over. Um, and see, we had budgeted one seventy seven for that and I got karma that is in other other budget line items too.
Yeah.
Um. It would be nice to get another project done, so I don't wanna zero that out.
Well, that's what, we were curious if we could slip the skater in there as a capital.
Is the what? Is the software?
It is a capital outlet, yeah, it's a soft software, but it's probably fine in software, like a.
So it's my understanding with that capital outline, it's more of like a.
Infrastructure type.
Right, 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 it's something that can change the value of something that is assessed value.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, and and then two, it's gonna be substantial enough to be kind of meet a thirty thousand dollar minimum, and be engineered and.
Yeah, okay.
We do have a lot of complaints from the top of the hill about water pressure, we can maybe put some money into that, looking into fixing that.
I hate to get too creative with it, we have so much that's.
I don't don't do that, it's like a bomb or something.
That's uh. I don't want to put a new radiator in the car when we need tires, let's put it that way.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling you, that's what I'm saying, yeah, I.
So if if we can come up with some sort of a project that helps us uh tackle a section of our infrastructure that's maybe the the biggest problem, or the biggest whatever, that would be awesome to use in there.
Yeah, sure.
Um, that takes quite a bit of time to develop and whatnot, so I don't know if it's realistic, we could do it in the year.
Top of the hill there.
By the school, just 'cause it's not the highest elevation in town, they have a hall, but I'm interested in it.
The the dures, we got a lot of houses around the football field, um, we get complaints, we.
A lot of them should be having their own pumps, just a lot of them require that, I don't mind us, you guys have a pump too, yeah, just because it is that and it's it there's not a lot, the city's been able to do it for it for quite some time, so if we do have those complaints, they probably need to evaluate having a pump or not.
Consistently.
But it's a business.
Consistently, yeah.
We have a pump, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just. There's a big old water tower.
A tall tower.
There'd be a big old water tower up there, but. A lot of paint orange.
Um, suggestions for capital outline?
Leave it.
Leave it empty?
No, leave it where it's at.
Leave it at ninety one or one seventy seven?
One seventy seven.
We could start looking into uh infrastructure upgrades and and um, like we we could talk with Johnson and and look into positive lining some cracked pipes or anything like that and 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 increase in the volume of our system.
The.
'Cause this is a money that we're actually gonna spend.
No, it's it's potential that we could spend money that if we were to get a grant, yeah, then it's, yeah, but.
That's for the money, yes, it's not, yeah, in in that sense, it doesn't need to be looked at as not real money, it's it's where it catches if we qualify for something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and and I'll just say this, I know lining pipes is is kind of a new age thing and whatnot, but like if if we're gonna do something, we need it to be not, we need to think not being, it's not, yeah, we need to think full replacement and get the longest of longevity out of it, so we want it to be very, very long term when we're considering projects, especially where we've got
I think if. Replace enough, yeah. In my mind.
We're we're the same as most rural areas, we're just got fully aging infrastructure, so.
In my mind, I think in the first street, if we replaced the main down First Street and then worked away across town the next couple of years or something.
Right. Yeah. Another stuff, picked another section, right, so something similar to twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, if you guys would give me that information and we'll start, Patty and I will start helping, see what we can find and what's out there, maybe what um, what would be realistic to apply for and then what we think might cater to our needs best, we could we could work on that, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and leave it at the one seventy seven. Just make it even for fun. Capital improvements. Um, I think that was more of a, again, guarantee if we have a project, we didn't have anything in there last year or the year, the year before, we had the one sixty. And that might have been for the pumps and everything else that they had in mind at that time, right?
Yeah, that.
I think that's what that probably would have been.
My.
Um, so until we have something specific, I don't know that we can consider anything there. Um, debt service. Are we, we're probably looking really about the same on that, right?
Everything, so.
So we probably need to just move over, do we need to in increase that lining means, or the forty two two would be?
Forty two two seven five, is that what's up there?
Yes, is that, um, the water plant, what we built on, water plants are still active, yes.
I believe so, yeah, it's the. So that, it would sure seem to be, it should be the same.
So realistically, we should have paid more out on that this year.
Yeah, yeah, that seems like a low number too, it's half the.
Well, it's, no, but look at the next one, it's the interest that we're paying, you know, it's an insane amount of interest because our payments are sold.
Oh, right, 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 there you go, that's that now. When they break it down so far, God does do that. So we do need to carry that over also, um. We have seventeen nine.
We'd go with the seventeen nine.
I I I don't see why we could just.
Eighteen.
Yeah, just eighteen to make it simple, so, eighteen thousand, that is sixty nine oh two, nothing. Transfers, yes.
I'm still believing.
Yeah, we're at this time, kind of do this time depreciation, we don't have anything to consider at this time. And frothy handwork, I don't I don't believe that that's another one, right.
It's laying on there.
So, I I believe we've went through everything that has to do specifically with water, are you guys comfortable with what we've covered so far?
I think so, I think so.
What we can do is we'll go ahead and and uh, look at total numbers and then evaluate the suggestions you guys put in, um, and see if we can't keep it that, if it's not something that doesn't match up with what we have for income.
Yeah.
And see if we can make this work, so, we'll um, be able to give, we'll have a final look at that finally, then after we've evaluated that.
Yeah.
Council, do you have any questions at this time for water? Good to move on, can I just move on sewer, please?
The only thing I really have additional for sewer is if we look at another um, um, pump for the digesters, the pump from the digester up to the rebeds, we got one last year.
Would that be a new new one or rebuilt?
Uh, I think we wanna go the new option, I I got a quote out for both, but the one we got last year.
Tell me again when it's formed, sorry.
We pumped from the.
If pumps are slung from the the back of the digester up to the rebeds.
Pump from the digester, the back of the, yeah, so the rebeds.
There's a seal inside of it that goes bad, and then it starts letting water in.
Or share the one that we have, there's enough for.
Shorts it out. Yeah.
What do you have for approximately cost on that, it's just one?
Uh, ten K, yeah.
Okay. Are you looking under sixty two oh three, 'cause this one's forgot? Uh, let's see here.
I think systems would be, yeah, this is the.
Repair systems.
Yeah, I think that's where I'm calling out.
Um, yeah. Okay. So last year we spent twenty seven seven, this year it says we spent nothing on the drainage systems, is that some, right? We did budget for five.
We spent a little bit, no, we didn't, well, I don't do approach things, actually.
You guys have spent a lot of time fixing stuff up at water, but I don't think we've had a lot of time.
Well, it's a compressor, the cost of a compressor that's somewhere in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be three and a half, three and a half.
Ten and a half.
So it's five thousand.
But that's gonna be.
Exempt too, so.
That looks a.
That hurt, we got trouble with the maintenance.
But.
Yeah, 'cause it's got forty nine oh three in there, so it might be internal, is where that one might be sitting, um.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, the the valves, yeah.
I don't know that it would be bad to move it for just from five to ten to include that at this time, I don't know that we need to include anything else with the way that's set up, does that make sense?
Yeah, so if you see anything of the, well, I think that's.
Well, he's asking for ten right off the bat, and we didn't do one of those, he's.
Right.
When's that, five? I would set that at fifteen.
Fifteen and other things.
Yeah, and and also.
Why that, in case it's something else.
Like to get some lighting up there on the, we have lighting there, but mostly.
There's all the basel light.
Now that would be for billing, so we'll come back to that, but this would just be for the systems.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the building, not, 'cause it's actually around the basel.
So. So around the basel.
The lighting and the crashing.
Yeah, around around the the sewer base.
Yeah.
It's system repairs, right, so.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you you gotta figure that we've that we've always budgeted five grand for that.
Seven two five. Sure, I'm picking up what you're putting down, we're just adding to it, right.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, with, yeah.
So fifteen at sixty two oh three, yeah, do you have any other items that you'd like me to consider?
We'll see when we fix something, uh, we wouldn't we wouldn't mind fixing that graph order on the uh, on the screen room, it doesn't look very close. It makes it getting the uh, the waste out of there a little difficult, all the the waste that's screened out of the water.
I think it boiled from the clothes, just they took the.
I think the motor's used up, pulled the chain off.
Yeah.
So we can potentially repair what we have, as opposed to replace it, if you're looking to?
Yeah, I think so, we just need to look at.
Estimate cost?
Twenty five hundred bucks. Yeah, I would would guess two K, yeah.
On the high side.
Okay, so that would be.
'Cause I would, I think the function that just doesn't.
That that would be actually the building.
Probably building.
Yeah, that would be building, probably.
Or would it, or is that down outside or external plant here, or plant, I think external plant needs.
It's it's more building than applying.
More building in the plant, okay, so we did budget for two thousand.
Yeah.
We do have a couple doors that need to be fixed, some doors.
Do we wanna consider forty five hundred then, or do we consider about the two thousand?
Double doors.
Yeah, that makes sense, if we give give the four there's a door.
The doors to the the door to the electric room.
Yeah, forty five would be better, yeah.
Okay. Okay, you were adding another door into that.
We have two double doors on our electric room that doesn't close, we just have a bucket of sand holding it shut, um, we have a door to our our utility, our the compressor room, it it doesn't close without some motivation.
Doesn't stay closed, so, yeah.
So do the doors need to be fixed, or do they need to be replaced, do you think?
I think we'd probably fix them, but I don't a hundred percent know without, I don't like or.
I don't know if it's as simple as just replacing the handle, or uh, it would be.
So would you like to have for consideration on that, that would be ma- building needs?
Yeah, I think the forty five hundred might be topping, I would like to think that would cover all of those.
That would include both those items and and potentially.
Those and the door, yeah, the overhead door.
Okay.
Where did you put your outside lights, where is that company?
Uh, I.
Uh, systems is I think what we.
They're for lighting the actual basin of the 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 plant, where like all of the.
Yeah.
Pump, like the.
So.
Not not on the actual building, they're just poles around the to to light it up at night if you have to look on there.
Mm.
So we're going to have the external?
You got all your U V lights up in there.
And the rest of the systems, oh.
They're running, but it wouldn't hurt to get some more spares.
I would discretion.
The the ones that's not doing well, the western, they're.
It's just 'cause they're still lit, doesn't mean they're not.
They're they're lit, they're not yet, they're not put down as much as they should, so, at least half of them.
Right. Right. So what's the, what 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 does the manufacturer say the the life is on on those actually, you know, doing their U V job?
I wanna say three to five years.
Okay, when was the last time we?
We bought some, two years ago, last year, I would say, so I think we only bought enough for half, so all of them, and I think I might have four of them still, I don't remember how many I've got on my end.
It sounds like one of the lefties like, like two years ago, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I can't remember which one it was.
I guess, not last fall, but the like the previous fall.
Actually, I think it's the spring. But it could've been fall, I don't remember for sure exactly.
Completely.
Yeah.
Well, do you guys wanna start just going line by line, 'cause it it sounds like we don't have any major projects to consider, major anything, then we can maybe work some of the stuff in there, you know, line by line.
Yeah.
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 Did you have questions?
Oh.
Maybe maybe some wish list items, cool.
Um.
Sure.
I guess on this one, on the weeks, we don't have the on-call broken out, but realistically, you know, we're doing weekends down there as well, so that's worth writing on.
Sure. But we don't have that line item, uh, so it's worth.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do question mark, on-call. Line item. Do you want to move that to another place?
Gonna be fifty two oh one, potentially, if it's not used.
Awesome, okay, thank you, uh, as far as income, we're probably not gonna look at anything drastically different than what we have experienced.
I would do so.
This last year, so that's probably everything in the four thousands is probably, there's some more, so we'll let that be, we'll start with thirty two, fifty two hundred. Excuse me. Again, Terry has worked out these wages and percentages and increases in what we can consider, so it would be from, moving it from forty four seven to sixty four seven. That's substantial.
Yeah, I don't know if that's more just spending more time out at the sewer plant, I know I've, I spend probably only a fourth of my time at the sewer plant currently, and the rest is with water, driving the water problem, so.
That's gonna be so important, even with time.
Yeah, so if we sh- should have some focus there a little more towards.
We're doing. I can show you the percentage of the rest of your.
Sewer, yeah, I I just, you know, would be.
We can adjust that, the all we need on water, if we need to, so.
Yeah.
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 Well, or spend more time with the sewer plant and actually do more things down there. 'Cause like you said, we have to focus more on the water side, the.
We've had a lot of projects and a lot of that could be a priority though too, so I guess I I would take your lead in in what you feel is needs to be maintained, needs to be the utmost priority, yes, so, it's something that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, well, it 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 still is the water side, I mean, there's more that we could be doing on the sewer plant, but it's not as priority, and that's why we've spent more time on the water planet.
Sure, sure, I think that's reasonable, okay. We'll move on, payroll taxes is gonna be forty nine, fifty five and eighty six, so it's. Retirement, one thousand nine hundred forty three dollars and forty seven cents. Employee benefits, four thousand three hundred twelve hundred, even. Contractual services, I.
The.
I've not spent anything the last two years, but we did budget it.
No, that contractor, contractual services is the, well, the sewer cleaning guys come up to bother out of, yeah, that we usually, that should, yeah, it's just, it's under the bomb thing, I think they've got it on the professional fees there.
Or or right, that would be contract, so that needs to be in there, 'cause we did just say that.
So that's what.
Well, but again, that is.
So about ten K a year.
I think it's, I think it's.
That goes, they would probably be under contractual instead of professional.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's got put on the wrong one.
I think it's been thirty one hundred. Yeah, I'm thinking it might have been thirty one hundred.
Okay, so that would need to go under, need to, and what is, what did that run the ship, I feel like it was under a lot of this, maybe it did.
Usually usually it's ten, and I think it was like eleven nine or something, three.
Oh, my head, for the camera.
Well, and then we also got three manual uh, extenders, and so that was.
Right.
And we did a little bit extra.
Yeah.
But they also run that as, we've got a certain budget to give them, and they get whatever they can within that budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I I tell them ten grand that we usually have, and they do as best they can to keep it within that.
But I I wanna say I think you you're right on it, you said it was eleven something.
I, yeah, I wanna say eleven five, eleven nine, something like that, and that's what I was guessing, awfully, that twelve under the professional fees.
That's not familiar.
It comes like to water. Not sewer.
Okay.
But I don't.
So twelve under fifty six hundred, please.
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna make a note, that's what that, what we, what we've issued to that, uh, what's that company's name?
W F I.
Uh, workforce incorporate.
Are there a bunch of hats up at the water plant, come on?
When do they come out, I don't think.
Usually July, June, July, between June, July, yeah, it's the first part of the summer usually.
July, like July, June.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay, next page, thirty two dash fifty seven hundred dues and fees. Um, last year we budgeted eight hundred, which has been pretty consistent for the last three years, we did extend twelve, twenty seven, eighty six.
I don't know if the um, A W W A and the NARO are following that as well, I know they do water, so I think I think they do all.
They would go into using.
You spent eight thousand last year, I thought I.
Hmm?
That might have been just a a difference in.
Mm-hmm, too.
Yeah, I would.
Um, do you feel that twelve hundred would probably be?
I would think so.
Should have changed much from that.
I don't think it should.
We've got twelve hundred?
'Cause, you know, again, that's some of that's renewables, like certain renewables.
Sure, pretty consistent. Um, and then we have bond admin fees of thirty four hundred, but that's actually expended to date, not budgeted.
Shouldn't even be used.
I don't know what to do.
I don't know what that is, yes.
Yeah, that's that's for one name, that's admin for one name, originally got the bond, like you said, these line items can't, they just they don't go away.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, they don't actually have a zero.
Right, 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 so, I mean.
I can look at that.
It's. Yeah.
That needs to be moved somewhere else then, 'cause that's probably early in the year. Okay, so we'll have you uh, clarify.
I'm thinking that's the bond to what?
One name originally got the bond.
The plant, and then it was the the plant.
The.
U S D A, huh?
The sewer bond.
Oh, the sewer, oh.
Yeah.
For the new building, right?
Yeah.
The facility.
The facility.
Yeah, so that's been paid and done, so that's in twenty five, I think so, okay, fuel, um, and and maybe this is something you guys can do too, I don't know if that's something that that sewer can cover more of your fuel expense.
Yeah.
Than what they do now, and help, balance the between water and if you have budgeted two thousand, if you used twelve hundred, so that could probably.
Well, 'cause. Like you were saying, when you. Yeah. Well, like you were saying, when you fill up the truck once a month, about a hundred dollars, you know, so that's on track there for the most part, so I don't know if that got the cost for the diesel fuel for the the sewer plant.
Yeah.
I think I think I think maybe okay for the diesel, for the, uh.
Okay.
Is is why I think I would, I think so at least.
So two thousand is probably realistic to keep. Council, agree, okay. Okay, next line, item is thirty two fifty nine hundred, insurance. Interiors, we've got that down as eighteen to twenty seven.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's.
That sounds probably pretty accurate, we did have budgeted seventeen five, which is probably pretty close, yeah.
Yeah.
Professional fees.
And tho- those insurance came from, uh, we did have it broke down by by Jake, so that's why I should have, so that's that's fairly reasonable, yeah.
Right, right. Pretty accurate, thank you. Professional fees, we've had budgeted thirty five hundred for the last three years. Um, we did use, a- again, I think we just have the the cleaning underneath that, is why it says twelve, otherwise it shouldn't be that high.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that that's what that is.
So I think thirty five hundred is plenty high.
Mm-hmm.
We could almost even knock that down to three.
Yeah, 'cause I don't. Just.
There's not a lot of fees tied in that, and it would be if we had a project, if engineers could be involved and so whatnot, so, we'll probably say for three, bank fee, again, what's that all?
No, not not, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Debt debt expense, well, publications and advertising, um.
Well, let's talk about this, six thousand, so, if we, right, so if we were to do.
The professional fees, sure. A project.
Uh, I just like a street project, in anytime, if if you do repaves, anytime you go over the top of a sewer line, you're gonna wanna date that up.
Other than sewer lines are a lot deeper, and usually most of them don't run under the streets or down the alleys, I mean, there are a few of them that are at streets, and those of them may.
Those are down the alleys.
But that wouldn't necessarily, like unless it was a very large project.
So you wanna split the engineering, is what I'm saying.
Okay, we've got seven thousand for pro- for professional fees in water, so are you thinking more?
I don't think we're gonna get anything done, um, you know.
Without something on the docket. It's hard to consider that, that you're kind of free there.
I mean, we've got.
Should we just leave it at thirty five hundred then, 'cause that's what we've processed and looked at?
I'm trying to think, what are the, that much is? One, six, and and that, um, the the m- main things that that's handling is a bunch of old.
Right. Right. If something came out from good, right.
We're getting the gravel roads. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Should we just leave it unchanged, thirty five hundred?
I think that's a decent bet.
Sure.
Okay, we'll make that thirty five hundred for mine added thirty two dash six thousand. Um, we'll go back down to thirty two dash sixty one hundred, publications and advertising, we normally budget a hundred and fifty dollars, um.
Is that the mon- lot they go to go well, or is that just advertising for positions? I mean.
It would be, so, uh, as far as billing, that would be more, um.
It would be that. I'm just asking, 'cause I don't recall having any publication out on bar sewer, I I mean, sewers, like, you know, I can't think of anything that would.
Right, right, that's my kind of thing. But I wouldn't think like, uh, your utility billing should fall underneath that, right?
Oh, okay.
It wouldn't be a.
I don't think that that would be a utility bill.
Yeah, so I guess I can't think of what we had.
The only thing I would wonder is whether special mailing, there might, oh, what about that, that lead thing?
Yeah. Did we take part of that one? Do we take part of that lead survey and care at practice?
We'll charge some of it, we might have, I don't know that we.
It might have just been a percentage.
Could ever should have, but we might have.
Could we do anything else somewhat to that? Thoughts, council, do you wanna keep that at one fifty where it's been the last three years, or?
Sure.
Three dollars.
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause I'm surprised, it should be over that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move it back to one fifty, it's not like we advertise that we have a sewer system.
Well, well, usually you advertise the 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 stuff you shouldn't put in the sewer system.
Well, there you go, that would be good, there you go. All right, we have nothing, uh, thirty two sixty two hundred, maintenance.
I think that's where that pump went last year.
But I don't guess so. Probably, and that should probably be under system repairs instead of maintenance.
Yeah, I would say that. Yeah, I would say that.
What was that one about?
So you wanna leave maintenance with something nominal?
Two thousand, looks like two thousand. Yeah, that's what we've had for quite some time, I don't think I'd see where that wouldn't be realistic to just keep it too.
W F I.
Yeah. And maintenance for vehicles might be falling under their, maybe so that because there's nothing under the sewer vehicle.
Possibly.
It might be.
Yeah.
From the station, the process.
We decided to give repairs for vehicles a thousand dollars underwater, I don't think that that's a problem to do the same for sewer, stay consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sewer sewer trucks get a little bit worky.
So, good council?
Yeah.
Okay, building repairs, we got
We have forty-five hundred.
We've got the forty-five hundred pencil in there, did you guys think of anything else that maybe needs to be added from what we've already discussed?
No, not I can go.
Okay, system repairs, we adjusted that to fifteen thousand, next is uh internal plant maintenance.
How that would be in.
We didn't budget anything on that.
Maybe in the screen room. Maybe in the screen room, it would be kinda nice to to maybe update or get some sort of a.
A different chute for that coming off the screen.
But another system for collecting the uh unmentionable stuff.
The trash that's in the system, so that it doesn't go over the system.
Right now, it's it's about twelve foot in the air and it just drops everything down into fifty gallon bucket and uh
Fifty gallon bucket.
Right.
it's.
Not in the system.
It's it's it doesn't always hit the barrel.
Yeah.
So you need a file.
I think, well, I mean, what I'm looking at is those four line items there, there's money there that's been expended.
Yeah, nothing. Spent, nothing budgeted.
Yeah, but nothing budgeted, so we better figure that out.
So what's happening because on some of that is, you know, they if they write sixty-two oh four on a bill, that's where we're gonna put it to, we're not second guessing that.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I think that's what's happening, has their being more specific with their stuff.
Yeah.
Right, so we'll need to make sure that as we move forward that you guys are consistent with what you pick.
We do, we do try to apply that. We also try to use the P O numbers when we order things as well to try and alleviate it, um.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. Okay, so we'll need to keep that in mind though, as we're giving that number, so those numbers do need to come out of last year's, you know,
That would be a very realistic.
Yeah. Yeah.
out of out of the budget that you have and that's, so right now it's not considered, but you guys have been using it that way.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
Um.
So do we need something for uh internal plant maintenance, I mean, it it sounds like a decision.
They've been using it that way.
Yeah, I don't know, it's kind of fine.
So if they wanna continue using it that way, we need to put something in there, is that is, yeah, like Chris just said, you you're almost at the five.
I think that's acceptable.
Okay, also five thousand there. Uh, external plant maintenance, you've used two thousand two hundred eighty-five seven year to date.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of that that is, but I'm.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of, maybe it was for fixing the uh without the system, the lights, the
That could be.
D O probes and stuff like that.
Yeah, that might be the D O probes, that makes sense, something like that.
Something that's been wired or something like that.
Two thousand enough for there, to be to be.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, where where are you gonna put those U V bulbs?
Would that that would fall under that?
That would probably be.
So how much that that would that?
I wanna say they're about twelve hundred, what we ordered last, two years ago.
So who did you take?
Right, so it's the price of everything's gone up, so.
Yeah, so if we call it fifteen?
Is it curve light or something?
Maybe.
No, that's for the bundle, I wanna say like forty of them.
Oh.
I also think we consider that we're all kind of saying any of the work that we do in the in the lift station out there in the uh in the park, the media, external plant maintenance and so
Yeah.
Uh, this is a lot.
We have been having to, that's the building that makes it a lot of work, um, so we have been working with that thing.
Right. We need to do something with it, so is two thousand enough or do we need like twenty-five hundred or?
I wanna need fifteen hundred just for bulbs.
Just for bulbs, I think two thousand twenty-five hundred would be fine.
Right.
Yeah.
Or even thirty?
Ooh.
Crazy.
So if we did.
Three?
Okay, so okay.
Three, then we pulled everything. Okay.
All work.
Again, this is all penciled in because we'll have to go back and make sure that everything matches, so when it comes to the final item, it might
Mm-hmm.
Be.
we might have to evaluate what we have in each.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
We're also taking notes on some of the areas where there were t- crazy spending, we would might have made some breakdowns and stuff, so we'll we'll put Terry over there.
We we flexible.
Sure. Right. City line maintenance, should ask to call out so whatnot.
Yeah, we usually, I'm like on sewer side, I'm not gonna, I mean, you know, people complain about sewer smells, we go and check stuff, it's the most part.
Right. So five hundred, can I have any five hundred there or?
Five hundred would be enough.
Yeah, I would think so, cause that would be Harrison coming down and jetting force.
Harrison. Harrison jetting force, but we 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 do the the Harrison is for the billets, do the I don't know, trade it for.
Or shadowing jet force. Or whatever. Well, yeah, it's hard to say for sure, if we do, like favor type trades as opposed to getting paid by scratchy, you're correct.
Right.
Yeah.
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 Yep, so we've got also testing maintenance at thirty-two sixty-two oh seven.
Well, that's.
I think that was a a D O prob, sorry, the page probably got a year ago.
So, testing maintenance isn't for
It would be, this is, it wasn't expended or wasn't.
like a virus or.
Oh, yeah, it might be that, it might be uh.
Okay, is that a, yeah, a virus virus bill possibly for samples and or to Scott's block every month?
Yeah, yeah.
It could be.
That makes sense.
Um, it it's it it's done this way because you guys have submitted it this way, where it's not ever been submitted that way before in the last three years, so we we're we
Yeah.
So we we get, we almost have to look at this as if that is those samples, where would they have pulled those samples from before, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think this was the grand plan of.
Right, breaking that down so we knew the cost of what that was according to.
Yeah. I don't I don't know if I would have known the system previously or or it would have been all.
Would that be professional fees to have somebody testing stuff for us? Not really, it'd be more contractual.
Uh, yeah, I would think it'd be more contractual.
Cause we we have a contract, but I don't know, I I think we pay per sample, cause we we actually got our water zone shrunk down, so we only have to do half as many samples monthly to try to cut our virus bill down.
Right, but it's still, it's it's still subcontracted, dude, I mean, it's it's an outside agency, it's it's performing the service, you know.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Which I'm.
So it would be interesting to be able to keep track of this in this this like line item, okay, um, year to date, you've used eleven hundred thirty-five and ninety cents.
Yeah.
Twelve hundred enough for a year, you think?
I'd say about twelve hundred. I would think so.
I think it's seventy-five dollars per cent.
So line item thirty-two sixty-two oh seven, twelve hundred. Software, now if you consider Atlas, does that affect the sewer plant?
They did stuff for s- two or three years ago, so I don't think that.
Cause that's a separate system.
Yeah, that's a totally different system.
And it's successful on its own at this time.
Yes.
So we wouldn't need to consider anything different and we don't pay a per month or an annual, okay, so that can still remain zero.
No, no.
Sales tax, which probably goes fairly unchanged, let's see here, expended year to date is around ten thousand, we have current budget of about eighteen thousand, um. We probably need to keep that around eighteen, I agree? Supplies. Looks like we budgeted about twenty-five hundred for two years previous, last year we doubled it, but year to date, we've only expended about twenty-six hundred. If you'd like to bring supplies back to twenty-five hundred and.
I think that's the most difficult.
Okay. Uniform allowance, we've got one fifty there because we have the other one in water. About sixty-four twenty-five, nothing noted, sixty-four twenty-six, nothing noted, sixty-four thirty-five, that was a whole project.
Mm-hmm.
Sixty-four forty-five, also previous project, um, thirty-two sixty-five hundred training and education. Looks like we budgeted about a thousand dollars for the last three years, this last year you expended thirteen hundred, you know, fourteen hundred really.
Yeah.
Yeah. The course that I took this year, so I don't know how that expended three years.
Yeah.
Right, so you think a thousand would be enough or?
A thousand should be enough.
Okay. Utilities, that's not something that is gonna probably change much, we've already went over what we budgeted for last year, we've been budgeting seventeen thousand for some time and it looks like we've went over the last three years, um probably twenty-five realistically.
Yeah.
To be on the safe side, so that needs to be up to twenty-five thousand please. Um, other, we need to do our best to avoid that one, so we'll zero that one out, and we've only ever thrown in a hundred dollars anyway, so there's there's a little cut.
Hmm.
Uh, again, last, and then the next uh, let's see, sixty-seven fifty, not have the pool. Sixty-eight hundred, uh what I, I mean, we don't, we really don't have any improvement whatnots to be coming down the pipe that we have in mind that we could even apply for it this time, so that'd be kinda hard to make happen with me or
Yeah.
I guess I need an opinions on that, council. For the next for sixty-eight twenty-five, sixty-eight thirty and sixty-eight fifty. But then nothing's gonna really be happening, right?
And will you give me improvements?
Well, I I'm sure it can be, I'm sure realistically we could use improvements somewhere, but realistically, is that something that we can apply for the funds? Plan the project, implement the project and complete the project within the next budget year.
I think that's, I think that's planned, but still we put, you know, a big number in like hundred and seven or something that way.
If it just in case, we can still do it, well, and what we've continued to run into with aging utility, we probably do need to have something in there as a minimum,
Something catastrophic happens. Emergency grant.
Yeah.
especially since we've got such aging infrastructure.
There there is a lot of cool stuff in the pipeline as well from the training that we go to on on what they're doing with the manholes and stuff, uh, we can definitely could use.
Programs.
Yeah. Rehab manholes.
Rehab manholes and uh to to try it out.
Mm-hmm. So if we did a big enough project, we did a couple dozen of those, that would qualify for that size of a project.
I I know talking to the W F I, they've uh made note that the s- main sewer lines on the east side and the west side of Second Street that runs down the alleys could probably use some serious work with uh aging lines, maybe broken, fallen in, tree roots, all all kinds of stuff like that.
What would we what would we add, tie a number to a project like that, if we just said we could do it all?
Five.
Oh, okay.
I would a whole segment of that thing.
How many zeros is that again?
Just a nine five pick.
So, are manholes part of this that you're talking about in the alleys? Would would that all be one project, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they do the main and manholes.
For a grant, so for a grant.
Yeah.
Exactly, cause this is where this.
We might have released to 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 what like section handle started with.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, 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 we would just have to pick a section like we did in seventeen, cause that's ultimately what they did in two thousand seventeen, is they picked a section or
Yeah.
or the the most problematic lot, strip of line, and then they they qualified for
Mm-hmm.
was it C D B G for that one, or U S D A, I think that was U S D A.
I think.
Oh, it's the.
Uh, U S D A, but I don't know that for sure, I would say it's just U S D A.
I would say it's just U S D A.
I think I'd go two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand. That's about the amount for U S D A and I mean.
As long as. Right. That if you qualify for it, right, but.
Yeah.
That's my thought on that.
Thoughts?
Okay.
Well, well, at least we don't.
You know, you don't have dudes that stay there, it's it's amazing.
I mean, that's not, it's not, it's not money that that we can come up with, but if we, if somebody gave us that money, it would we would not be able to.
Yeah, it's. No. Right.
It's the wish list I'm running through.
I thought it was under N R L.
So realistically, that's probably what it would be, I would guess.
I do that every night. Right, 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 cause it we're it more often than not, it is U S D A, right, so that, and that is there's, yeah.
Yeah, two fifty, so yeah.
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 I decided you're not having improvements.
No. But please tell America we don't have the two thirty.
No. Sixty-eight hundred, right? Sixty?
Yes, thirty-two dash sixty-eight hundred is the item number or the item, account number now.
It beats nine hundred and ninety-three thousand.
So twenty-five, twenty-five hundred there. Do we have to have anything here improvements then, cause that would technically be a need in the system.
Have any improvements, yeah, I would think so. I mean, as the experts would, to me, I would write it up as that's the improvement, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's uh note that to uh pass the orders for guidance on on those two please. So, sixty-eight hundred and sixty-eight fifty, to how we would best, if we need to split that or how we need to with what we have in mind. Debt service, that should be pre-standard, you'll pre-terminate, and that is scheduled, correct?
Yeah.
See, debt service.
So you said that's most like the Second Street?
Yeah.
Well, I would take care of the uh.
I mean, the the main transmission lines that go most of the town.
The. The hole in the alley between the city hall and bank.
So, just to finish up, line item thirty-two sixty-nine hundred, debt service needs to be a hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-one seventy-nine, from what Terry has shared with us. Interest expense is also gonna be generated from that also, that's going to be sixteen thousand three dollars and thirty-seven cents, please. Um sixty-nine oh two, not at this time, seven thousand, not at this time, seventy-one hundred, not at this time, and depreciation and profit hamburger will be at the um, orders.
So.
Concerns, questions?
So it's supposed to vote Tuesday, then you put the old sewer plant up to you. And when that would happen? I don't know. Probably by the time things happen.
But that's income too, so we can just put that under, uh
Right.
we'll put that, I'll put that on the top here so we can ask the owner of that sewer plant, so.
Sure. We have no idea what was in here.
Right, 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 but we still have to probably just assume something and put something in for income, so that way it's noted, thank you for that.
Right.
Any other comment ideas?
Can you say how many acres that was?
I'm looking into it, it's either four, right, like.
Yeah.
We we went out there the other day.
I would I would guess, like you said before myself, but especially if that's eight over there.
Questions, concerns, just water and sewer, we're looking at department, yes? I think, oh, yes, I know, we left a lot of of question marks, council, any questions so far? We'll go ahead and move on to department, please, thank you. Jennifer, thank you for being so patient, I was thinking I would just move you up first, I'm gonna take a moment instead of asking you to sit through that whole thing, so thank you so much for your patience tonight, my apologies.
Yes, Dennis, you're happy, the glasses are here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's fine, you told me that in the afternoon. I was thinking about an emergency phone call, but.
Yeah. Apologies.
That sounds like someone. Uh, I did look at this again today, and we've had a chance to get back into this, the pool, um, um, check some things, and I saw the one piece that we were looking at repairing or or revisiting, was the repairs building, so the uh in the pool budget, so the oh six six two zero, uh, six two zero two. And I think, uh, as we looked, especially at the uh, the bath house, there's a lot of little stuff, the, um all the way around the doors is starting to rot, and and so I would feel more comfortable if we put a five thousand dollars in there.
Yeah.
I think at this point, our committee is ready to start fundraising because we have a better feel now for what what maybe needs to be done. Um, so we're gonna, I mean, we'll be working on trying to raise some of this as well.
Okay.
We've got a cool open this first.
We will have to consider and ask the accountants on fundraising if that needs to remain separate by any means, or if it can remain separate, or if it is to be considered and deposited with the city, then we would need to consider that for income also.
Sure. Um, yeah, at this point, they're planning on, um keeping that separate, so just let me know if there are any changes to that.
Right, right. Will secretly recommend.
Cause she probably like will graze it and then have to lift it over the city or something.
Well, depending on, I I I'm assuming that if 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 it is the case that they want it to run through the city, they'll recommend exactly how they how we need to handle that, but if it is independent, you guys will need to figure out I'm sure they'll let us know also how you would need to handle it, with it actually being a city property and a city
Mm-hmm. Right.
you know, something that that is is of value at the same, you're you're affecting the value of the the house itself, the pool itself, those are all property and and infrastructure, so
Mm-hmm.
they might tell us that we can't do it separately too, so I guess that's all something that I we need to ask and we need to make sure we go over.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what I meant.
So we'll pencil it out, these numbers and consider coming through the city just in case, but that way at least we have the numbers and whatnot, and then. So we'll pencil in all these numbers and consider coming through the city just in case, but that way at least we have the numbers and whatnot. And then if it's something that needs to be separate, then we'll figure out how to that'll be easier to take out than it is to.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's this we did look up that system repair, that the heater is the other thing and I don't know what I put in there before, but some of my fix stuff said between forty and sixty, so I was just shooting it up fifty thousand dollar number, but again, that's something that I.
We'll.
It might be higher, I think.
Probably no.
Well, for that and and um you know, one of the things that came to mind after our last meeting was. The former electrical inspector, when he looked at the facility, he said he was not going to allow it to reopen without complete upgrade.
Oh, because.
The the shower house, all that stuff. Um it's it needs to be all weatherproof fixtures and everything in there. So.
Wow.
Now we have a new electrical inspector. It might have changed, but I doubt it.
Sure. Well, it's good to bring that forward so we can.
So whatever the cost of having one come in and inspect, we need to consider and.
Sure.
No, it's 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 free, it's stated.
Good.
Re- re- prescription.
But we'll need to get that started sooner than later so we know what we consider.
When do your discussions with uh auditors or knowing about the the funding from external funds? Yeah, is that something coming up?
Sure, where we need to put that. Yes, um sorry, can I do?
Thanks.
Our next one stays our final final, but I believe they're coming the day before to help work on everything.
Yeah. We're coming on the city, yeah, we're coming.
The twenty sixth.
To talk about our audit and then he'll be staying to do s- some of the adjustments that have to be done. Um so I mean, we'll have him here. Any questions?
Mm, a bunch of extra time. Mm-hmm. We do have the final meeting on August twenty seventh, but we'll accept it during the council meeting after that, so it'd be it'll depend on when we get get it done, but I think there's a deadline is sometime in in September, first or September that we have gathered on that.
Yeah.
Our budget? Um um I don't know. We have the budget guy, it's the same guy just that doing their audit, just somebody else there's gonna have to have it.
Yeah. It's close. Right, right, right. But it's it's a close game, so it's.
Yeah.
Through the second through the council meeting then.
Twenty fifth of September, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay as.
That's what we did last year.
Twelve oh one or something, right?
Mm.
Yeah, eleven fifty nine.
Eleven fifty nine, yeah.
I'm only gonna pay somebody to drive it to Lincoln 'cause the male wouldn't know.
Oh, are you serious?
I have a tough back there. Charter line, Terry, we can.
Yeah.
The heater you're talking about, did you have a price where I'm supposed to put it or? Uh sh- uh the number?
That?
Yeah. Uh yes, it would have been in the um. Sixty two oh three, oh six sixty two oh three.
Okay, and how much are we guessing?
I I don't know, Skip, you may have a better feel for it than me, but.
A couple of years ago, I think it was sixty thousand.
I had had forty to sixty quoted a couple of times, but that might have been from last last year.
Did you guys evaluate anything that you wanted to to consider for repairs to the pool itself?
Well, that's true, so I I think they're what they're really trying to do is um well, we need to take out some of the concrete, obviously, so that'll be um something that we put back in as we get those pieces put together.
I don't think we have that in there yet.
Uh the the concrete that is uneven is one of the pieces that I know that Buffy has mentioned before and I've I've walked over it the other day and I noticed it being back by the big diving port, you know. So a little bit of that stuff, that's let me see if I can find a financial number for that here.
'Cause then you I mean, at one point you guys had entertained the idea of uh removing the top of the gutter system to access the apron and all that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't know where that's going yet, but our our uh the the guy that we've got working on, he's really he's very positive about it not being that big of a deal. The gutter system we're pretty sure is shut.
But it's been.
Um but there are other ways for it into the pool. Um it's all exploring those some of those options now.
So anything that would be done for repair next year needs to be probably considered on there. What would you give for a a number there? I mean, obviously considering that, you know, we'd have to ask the the pricing and income match that, but we'd still have to have both those numbers considered.
Okay.
If we're told to consider them.
E- exactly, I know what you're saying. Um I think, so I'm looking at.
Sure.
We did all of that stuff. I'm just going back to what Buffy was looking at before, so like the electrical, she kind of the all of the electrical stuff, she was somewhere in the thirteen thousand dollar range for the the house and then the bath house. For those uh electrical fixtures and outlets, um plus another, you know, if we wanted to put in an A D A appliance, uh uh appliances, that's somewhere in the. Looks like probably, you know, if you had a lift and everything, thirty five thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. But that's but that also opens a lot of the grant funding opportunities.
That's. Right, yes, that's that's true. Um what the other one? Doors, I guess, uh so another, probably another ten thousand dollars for door and fixtures around those uh around the doors. You've got.
So I don't know how many frames or doors. Door scabs themselves.
Yes, yep.
So just as a full entire door system.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Removed.
Now, Jenny, you brought up something that something cooked. Do you remember the engineer saying that we were, since it closed, that we that there's no way that we would be allowed to reopen with that diving port?
Yes.
There was something about that diving port that had to go away because when they came last year.
It's probably tied to something where if your grandfather didn't, as long as you stay open and if you're not open, then you potentially lose grandfather and it is some sort of standard. I it I don't I don't remember anything.
Right. Yeah. It doesn't ring a bell.
I remember uh the diving board coming up, but I couldn't tell you what was tied to it, but it would maybe be worth looking into or asking again about, because that might be the case, is if your grandfather didn't, it has to stay open in order to remain grandfather, just like any of the ordinances that we have written for the city. I mean, if if somebody's grandfather didn't do something, they have to.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. It will be open to snow water.
Yeah. It was open for viewing.
Just for the water.
Everybody was open to drive by and look at it. It was a view revealing.
It was open for viewing, yes.
Other questions, responses?
I don't know, that seems like an eternity ago when we were talking about that.
I know. And yet. That that year was the pool built, Jenny, you know, in July.
I think nineteen seventy three.
Hmm, yeah. Maybe it was.
Yeah, technically we're twenty years past when the expiration of what they told us it would last, so I mean, I'm not doing too bad.
Yeah.
Good job. Okay.
Good deal.
Questions, concerns? Anything close up for now?
No.
All right, well, lots of to the yes, I can.
Do I need to wave to you or anything? To you, to throw you under the table.
I think Gary nice right here.
All right, thank you.
What's that long finger there?
There was two, there was two. On camera.
I make her smile.
He is too.